All right, we will call this meeting to order. Are there any visitors' remarks concerning the agenda?
Yes. You have a request in a waiver of standards for the Bradford County Library on the agenda. I'd like to know why the library system is added instead of just having the Bradford County Library on that.
It's because the state funding comes through the system. All right.
Yeah.
Could you explain in a little bit greater detail what a waiver of standards is and what it means?
Simply put, it just means you don't have to have a librarian, a master's degree on site through this period of time.
You know it says Bradford County and not Bradford County Library, right?
Bradford County.
What that?
You know it says directors of Bradford County instead of Bradford County Library?
Okay, well, correct that.
Okay.
Yes, it just says Bradford County, it doesn't say Bradford County Library.
Two things. Under new business item six regarding the renewal of the remit of the Thompson Law Office and Bradford County Planning Commission, the dates seem to be contradictory.
Should be 26, 2026, or 2025. No, actually.
January, February 25th through the day before.
Yeah, somehow the dates aren't.
Yeah, it should be 26. January 31st, 2026, it's one year. It's from February to January.
Okay. And, yeah, well, you have explained it, so. Regarding resolution 2024-28 for the Bradford County Budget, I'd like to know what page one under revenue from money and equipment and property item 350-060 is?
Those questions we can address after the meeting.
350. What was the number 350 again, just so I can?
It's labeled CONC. I have it. I believe it's a concentrated money market that they use?
We'll follow up with that after.
Okay.
Why don't you want a librarian with a master's degree at Bradford County?
It's just a temporary situation, James.
Well, it's four years, right?
No, it's two years.
Oh, because you're planning to, you want to suspend it off to be an independent nonprofit?
Right now, we're not going to get any of those questions. This is just a resolution that applies for the waiver.
Is there a supporting document that specifies the need and provided the data and the benefits being sought from the waiver?
It's just a waiver to apply, to get the waiver to not have to have the master's degree librarian for a period of time. That's it. All we're doing.
So there's no supporting documents with it?
What is the amount of money?
We're trying to move on a bit. We can do the visitors' comments after we get done with this.
It's a...
No.
Well, these are required.
This is agenda items, you have to have them now.
And they're remarks, they're not questions, they're remarks.
No, questions are types of remarks.
I ask questions.
I'm sorry, what was the question? Just so we...
And it does say remarks.
What was the question? So the question was for supporting?
Is there a supporting document specifying the need and what's being asked?
That's part of the application process.
Right, it mentions the responses provided herein, but there were no responses other than the waiver itself.
So.
Where's the herein?
Michelle, do you want to address that or answer that question? Sorry.
It's done online. There's a questionnaire that we have to fill out online. There's nothing. It's all done online.
Well, then, if we request the documents through open records, you will be able to do that?
After it's done online, I would assume you can get a PDF, yes. Or you can go onto the state site and get it yourself. I mean, it'll be available on there.
So you guys are approving the waiver without knowing the supporting information?
Approving the application for the waiver.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, the waiver application, without knowing what any of the information related to it is.
We fill that out as we're, it's an online application.
I'm just verifying that. Okay.
That's not written.
Yeah.
All right.
No, somebody else had raised their hand, I think.
I have, as you probably know, I stepped in too long this year to do the children's programming at the library. However, I need to make it clear that I cannot do that long-term. That's not a long-term solution to the problems created by the budget cuts. I think the children were left with no programming that they are used to weekly and that they rely on for education, social engagements, and other things. I just implore you to consider working for a long-term solution that supports the librarian staff during the session.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yes.
Well, no, but I didn't...
Oh, okay, yeah.
You were pointing to somebody else.
Okay. Am I correct in that the budget shows approximately $4 million for Act 13 money?
You're correct.
Is that taking into consideration the expected reduction from last year?
It's, what we do is plug into a budget, we don't know what that number is until next year. That's what we're anticipating.
Right, okay, that's what I'm asking, is if it... I'd heard like a potential 40% reduction from last year.
That was this year.
Okay, that was this year. You're not sure what the potential reduction, okay. Is most of that allocated to departments or is there a large sum separated for, I'm going to call them PEP projects, I don't know what else.
They're not PEP projects, they've predominantly been used for major construction projects, infrastructure improvement projects is what we've used those monies for.
For county departments or for outside of?
General county buildings.
Okay.
Bridges and our public safety infrastructure, i.e. our fire departments. We've given probably $4 million over the years.
Yeah.
As well as, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I believe also a portion of that over the years has been utilized to help with the buildout of the dark fiber infrastructure.
Yes, okay. And I just called it PEP project, I didn't know what else to use for wording, I didn't mean insulting of it. Is any of the Act 13 money allocated to the library?
No.
Would you consider, I implore you to consider doing that, to meet the budget requirements that the library has. It would alleviate a lot of the stress on the library and be able to help you get a new director that is worthy of the position. So that's what I would ask of Act 13 money for the library. You'd been saying throughout the year that you would discuss allocating money to the other libraries at budget time, that you consider it was budget-type stuff? Are you considering that at this time?
Not in this budget right now, no.
Okay. As Ray mentioned, it's the library resolution. If this waiver doesn't go through, do you have a plan for if the library system isn't allocated any money from the state because of the firing?
We will address that once the application is applied for and we find out what the determination of that is.
Okay, so you don't have any plan in place for, I would recommend discussing a plan just in case. That is to be talked about later. I have heard that you're allocating a potential additional approximately $40,000 for the library. Is that accurate compared to what the budget states?
Accurate, yes.
Okay. And that you're looking to move the bookmobile back into the library budget?
Accurate as well.
Okay, is that $40,000 over the 45 for the bookmobile?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, good. And we would still encourage you to allocate more to the library because it needs it. It's one of the cheapest departments you have per employee. Turnover has been very low, but cutting the funds is going to make that more difficult to keep, the low turnover. And I would just ask that you highly consider today during your debate to allocate even additional funds, even if it's not as much as originally proposed, back into the library? Thank you.
All right. Any other visitors' comments regarding the agenda?
I'm sorry, the waiver, who does that apply to?
That applies to not having to have a master's level degree to librarian on site.
Or I mean, who does it, does it go like a certain organization?
The state librarian.
Okay.
You say you're considering adding an additional $40,000 to the library's budget beyond, what's in the budget that's?
No.
No.
Oh, it's included in the budget?
It's what's in here right now.
Okay. And that was for staffing, for additional staffing hours?
There's $40,000 additional to the library budget.
So to just clarify, and I think I understand your question, so remember back in November, we put a budget on the table.
Right.
We're permitted to essentially modify that up to a certain amount without having to then republish it. And so that's what was done, that $40,000, because it's still under the threshold of what can be done.
Okay.
So when we say, when we say we're adding $40,000, out there you can see that reflects that additional $40,000, but I just want to be clear, it's not an additional $40,000 over top of the first $40,000 we put on, does that make sense? Meaning, we're not, the $40,000 was added since the...
Basically, you advertise a budget, after you advertise it, you added $40,000 to it, and that's included in the budget that as currently is now?
As you can see it out there, correct, thank you, yes. You said it better than I did, thank you.
And, okay, so it's really, they can use it for whatever they want?
It's part of the budget, it's part of their budget.
Okay.
Anyway, there's a couple of other departments that received allocations as well, I believe, right?
As far as what?
Well, the amount is more than, the resolution...
There's some changes that apply to the budget process. All right.
Could you go into further detail about the November 18th executive section?
It's for personnel and/or attorney's relation, attorney-client, and we're not going to give any discussion of that.
And can I ask one more question about the waiver? Okay. So when you read the VA Library Code 24, Section 9332, it's referenced that in the waiver, it mentions standards triggering event, so what do you believe is the event in this situation?
Right now, we don't have a master's degree librarian at the library at this point.
Why is that?
And it's a personnel matter, I'm not going to get into it. All right. Unfinished business, consider approving the minutes of November 14, 2024.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. New business, consider approving resolution 2024-28, setting the Bradford County budget in the amount of $71,944,294 for 2025 with a county real estate millage of 10.43 on each dollar assessed valuation of 50% of market value, and approve setting the 2025 salary schedule with a 3% pay increase for all county employees, not covered under union contracts. So moved. Second. And motion to second, is there any further discussion?
Yes. I guess this is the time to do this. So I do have some concerns. The budget provides for a county real estate millage of 10.43 on each dollar assessed valuation of 50% of market value. That, as I understand it, has not changed since 2009. And to put this into perspective, my understanding is, if you had a dollar in 2009, you would need roughly, from what I've seen, about $1.41 today in 2024 dollars in order to have the same buying power. But we, I pay taxes too. My concern is, is that by having 15 years of no tax increase and not doing something incrementally to address that, we're going to kick the can and then when the piper comes calling to mix metaphors, we're going to be really in a heap of hurt. So I am, and that's, I mean, you're seeing it on a small scale when it's trying to, whether it's a library funding issue, whether it's other department issues. I also want to be clear to people, we hear bandied about a $71.944 million budget, but understand that a vast majority of that is money that comes in from, whether it's from the feds or the state, and then it has to go out. That is not discretionary spending, it's money in, money out. If you look at actually, and I asked Dean Thorpe to pull these for me, if you look at the revenues for taxes, fees, interest income, and gas royalties, you're talking about $17,165,000, that's the number. To put that into perspective, in 2009, for the same class of revenue, it was $15,529,000. If you adjust that, $15,529,000, you're at $20,895,890 would be what you would need today to match what you were bringing in for things in 2009. Now, understand there's some costs that have come off, right? We don't have the manner anymore, I get that. But to the point about Act 13, yes, there's $4 million assumption that we're going to get in 2025, but if you actually look at what's uncommitted, you're only talking about 2.8 million. So it's not $4 million in terms of what we have budgeted for in 2025 plus what we have previously approved to spend. So I just, I have serious reservations about adopting a budget that is not appropriately planned, because when it bites, it's going to come and it's going to bite hard. And I am not in favor of hitting our residents with a big tax increase sometime in the years ahead. So I'm not in favor of kicking the can, and that's just me.
So let me get this correct, Commissioner, you're saying you're not voting for this because there is no tax increase in it, is that correct?
I'm saying, we haven't voted yet, Commissioner McLenko.
You said you're not in favor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not in favor of a budget that does not adequately address the concerns that are going to be coming down the bike.
So all I know is, is that inflation has gone on a spike. All I know is people are struggling. Now's not the time. Because it doesn't have a tax increase in it, I think that this year in particular, with people, they're really struggling, seniors, working families, struggling to drive the kids to school, fill up the oil tanks, make anything. Everybody talks about the, you know, groceries and the things that we see right in front of us, price of gas, but everything from your car insurance, your homeowner's insurance, all the unforeseens that you have, the duress growth, you're still going up, your interest rates, where you can't, you can't re-mortgage your home, now's not the time for tax increase. So anyway, that's what I have to say, Commissioner. Chairman, let's move to...
And I will soon weigh in on this just a bit myself, because a large portion of our population in this county are senior citizens. And they live on fixed incomes, predominantly, a lot of them on social security. And this county has done yeoman's work over the years that I've been involved here of holding costs down and looking for ways to reduce costs in departments. And I can tell you, department to department, they look at every dollar spent and try to find ways to utilize that dollar in more efficient way. And it's throughout the county, in fact, just yesterday, Sheila's standing there, I heard a conversation she had with our fiscal director downstairs about finding ways to save even more money in next year's coming budget. That's what our county department heads and our elected officials do on an everyday basis. They try to give the taxpayers of this county a dollar's value for a dollar spent. And that's what's allowed us to continue to keep the taxes as low as they are, in my estimation, we will continue to try to do that because our senior citizens struggle. And they struggle mightily trying to stay in their houses, so.
Your families are struggling too, if you've got kids at home, everybody can understand that, but it is a team effort here at the county. And I'm pretty proud of our elected officials and the department heads that work very hard to keep that, keep the cost down.
And I understand...
And comments are at the end.
And I understand that. I think the concern that I have is, and I understand what the, I understand what the composition is of the county, I live here too. I think though, if you ask most people whether you would want to get a big hit later or be able to budget incrementally now, and I think if you talk to most municipal officials, they would say the same thing. School taxes continue to rise, I understand. I just, you know, I have serious reservations about this, and I think there's going to be some, if there's not frank discussions now, there's going to be some frank discussions later. Because I don't know how we continue, we have cut, and I think absolute credit to our department heads and elected officials, they have done yeoman's work, but at some point, you can't bend that paperclip twice. And I just, so I just don't know, I'm just raising it as a concern that I have.
Yeah, I'll make one more statement, then we can move on, but we have a murder trial this year that could cost half a million dollars, or more, or more. And we need to wait and see how, but wait and see how that plays out, whether, you know, we're just, I'm very proud of our judicial system in this county, from our judges to the VA, public defender's offices, they bring in more help so for these murder cases, so we're just going to, you know, I'm very comfortable waiting, we've got money in the bank, now's not the time for us to hire seniors and working families. And we, but think we don't have frank discussions throughout all the budget. We do, very frankly.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Nay.
Consider approving resolution 2024-29, requesting a waiver of standards for fiscal year 2025 for the Bradford County Library.
I'll second that. I do have some questions, so.
The motion's signed, may you put it second.
So this would be for a two-year period, and I just want to be clear, if there's a determination to hire a director sometime within that two-year period, in other words, by adopting the waiver, it's intended to be a stopgap while there is a period where we don't have a master's level librarian. But the understanding is, is that it could be, if a librarian got hired, obviously the waiver goes away. I mean, in other words, it's just a waiver for the period where you don't have a director, is my understanding.
Where you don't have a master's level.
I apologize, yes, thank you for that clarification, a master's level director. Do we get, Michelle, do you know if we have an opportunity to, is there an opportunity to renew it, or is it only a one, two-year waiver that we obtained?
No, you can renew it if you have to.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Excuse me. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania and Bradford County for the 2024-2025 SLIP agreement at a fee of $9,707, or $9,207.
So, oh, second.
Have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Consider approving the following rates for the 2025 election workers. Judge of elections at $150, inspector of elections at $135, clerks $130, and constables $135. Just as a note, the judge of elections went up by $15, and the other three positions went up by $10 each. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second, any further discussion? And I will just say as part of the further discussion that even at the $150 to $130 range, I can tell you the work that they do on behalf of county residents is unbelievable because it's not an eight-hour day, it's usually, they have to go to training, and then it's a, probably a 14 to sometimes 16-hour day that they're doing on behalf of the citizens of this county. So that doesn't even begin to cover what value they give to our county residents, so thank you.
Yeah, hats off to all of our election people, Ms. Smith's course downstairs, the director, you know, you saw what other counties did, the provisionals were, were used kind of this year as something different, but our election office did a fine job and sorted all these forms and all the precincts.
All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider the reappointment of Robert Miller as farm director for a four-year term from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2028.
So moved.
We have a motion to second, any further conversation? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Consider approving the renewal of an agreement between Thompson Law Office and the Bradford County Planning Commissioner for Solicitor Services at a fee of $10,800 annually, effective February 1st, 2025 through January 31st, 2026.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Consider approving the reappointment of Darrell L. Miller to the Bradford County Conservation District Board for a one-year term beginning January 1st, 2025.
I don't know if I know that guy.
He's not related to the one previous, the Robert, I'm just saying.
So moved.
He's a nice guy.
I'll second.
Different ends of the county.
Thanks for sitting down there.
So we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise setting the date, time, and location for the Bradford County Planning Commission, 2025 meeting dates, meetings will be held at 6:00 PM at the Bradford County Public Safety Building as follows, January 21st, February 18th, March 18th, April 15th, May 20th, June 17th, July 15th, August 19th, September 16th, October 21st, November 18th, and December 60th.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Consider approving the renewal of the following solicitor agreements per the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? And I don't believe there's any increases in these things, just... All right, we have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Consider approving the purchase of service agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and the following providers effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025, per the agenda.
So moved.
That motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Consider approving the new appointment of Suzanne Peterson to the Bradford Sullivan MHID Advisory Board for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2027.
So moved.
We have a motion to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Consider approving PA 7 maintenance contract for the 2025 year for the victim notification services and authorize the chairman's sign. services and authorize the chairman's sign.
So moved.
Oh, second. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Consider approving the agreement between Bradford Sullivan Drug and Alcohol, SCA, and the Children's Service Center of Wyoming Valley, Inc., effective December 1st, 2024 through June 30th, June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Consider approving the agreement between Bradford Sullivan Alcohol, Single County Authority, and the River Valley Regional YMCA and Bradford County, the Bradford County Branch effective January 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Michelle, do we know what this concerns in terms of services?
Yeah.
Is it like an after-scholar program?
Counseling, I believe, isn't it?
Counseling.
It is recovery wellness program.
A recovery wellness program. Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Consider approving contract between Bradford Sullivan Mental Health and the following providers effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Consider approving the hires and transfers from DeShawn Norman down through and including Derek Strake.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. In other business, there were executive sessions held on November 18th, 2024 to discuss the termination of employment, and an executive session held on December 2nd, 2024 with legal counsel. Salary board, there's no unfinished business. We have Matt Allen, our treasurer, is a member of the salary board, so there's no unfinished business, new business, setting the salaries and grades from DeShawn Norman down through and including Derek Strake. Make that motion per the agenda. Second. We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Go Troy. State chance.
We're getting to that.
We're getting to it. Moving on to assessment board, there's no unfinished business, new business, consider approving the following for tax exemption, and that's Leola Cornell in Athens, VA, and it's a new veterans exemption.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, visitors' remarks, and I will alert everybody that we do have a hard out at 11 o'clock because we have a prison board meeting after the correction, so, and everybody wears two minutes and the timer's gonna be on the board up here.
Before you start that out, I want to mention something I believe may be a Sunshine Act violation. You technically have three boards that are currently meeting right now, and you should give a reasonable time for each board for visitor comment period at the beginning. I, I wouldn't say at the end, but at the beginning. With three boards, if you provide two minutes, you're providing under one minute for each board for people to publicly comment on the agenda items, and I would say that would be a Sunshine Act violation. It should be, in my opinion, three minutes, but even at two minutes per board, you're still looking at six minutes for each board for public comment period. And I just want to point out that potential violation.
All right, Ashley Walker.
Hi.
You already spoke, okay. Matt Jennings.
Yes, the budget's passing. I understand the county is not bringing in as much money as it needs to to facilitate funding programs, inflation, and whatnot. And Commissioner Miller's comment that we have a lot of fixed income residents, that's true, and this is a reality of living in a aging county, older folks retiring, as they should, but there has to be an additional step. There has to be fixing the budget to deal with the economic realities, while also, I haven't seen any effort from the county to change that economic reality. Right now, I don't see a lot of effort by the county to try and address that aging population, to try and attract young people to come into the county, or to encourage those young people who graduate from our schools to come back after college or after the army. There's just not as much effort as I would like to see to bring in new people, because if our county is just going to keep aging, eventually we're going to be a college of older folks, all retired, how can we provide any services in that regard? I also worry about manufactured consent. There have been rumblings that certain individuals want to close the library, no matter what. I worry that not hiring, not having a director and trimming the hours back is just going to manufacture consent so that in a few years, those reasons can be cited, we don't have a librarian, we don't have as many people because the hour's been cut, now we can cut the library totally. I worry that that is an approach being taken. Thank you.
All right, Phillip.
Assistant, you can go first.
Margaret Moritz.
With respect to Commissioner Gates' comments on tax, a slow approach to increasing taxes to meet with the budgetary needs, I'm in complete agreement because we can only continue to cut services, and that is, I agree with you, that is going to be a problem that we're going to have to, we're already facing and we have to face. And if we're cutting services that were provided to seniors, families with children, individuals, whoever, they have to make it up out of their own budget or go without. So they would be receiving a return of investment on their taxes, their taxes paid in this county. In addition, with just a quick point with the cuts with the library and the decision to not have a ten MLS at the library, when before we had, within two years, we had two, county library no longer has staff who manages and coordinates children's programming. The county library no longer has staff that manages and coordinates adult programming, so we have a huge gap in programming services that were considered exemplary and a model in this state. We no longer have anyone who manages and coordinates adult collections for children or adults because both of those positions are gone. I would like to see, a lot of things, but I would like to see an effort or a decision or some kind of action as to what's going to happen in the two-year, a window that has been given, requested for a waiver, and to move more quickly on hiring somebody who is indeed an MLS and is willing to go through training to return the, which is necessitated by the state, I don't believe it's been considered, to return the library to its former state, even if the budget is lower.
All right, thank you, Margaret. You.
Yes. I brought this banner today to show something that's been lost in this county. Family Place Library. There are only eight others in the state, only one above the I-89, and that's at Clark Summit. This was lost when both the directors left the library. It took a lot of training for them to get that, and it's a sad thing to see it gone. Yes, the county's going through changes, and there are signs, the funding is starting to dry up, as Mr. Gates alluded. Next year, the county receives zero from the American Rescue Plan. This past year, it received 3.2 million. This past year, Act 13 revenue was 5.5 million for 2025, that has dropped to 4 million, so the county lost 4.7 million in those. The news isn't all bad, for some reason, the Fund 11 Liquid Fuels revenue on page 110 shows the prior year fund balance jumped from zero to 1,106,878. I'd say that's good news. Something else, I, let's skip that. There has been a lot of talk about the extravagant Bradford County library budget. For perspective, the Fund 05 Human Services budget is 516,000 dollars. The Fund 06 Drug and Alcohol budget is 1.487 million dollars. The Fund 07 Mental Health budget is 8.681 million dollars. The budget for Department 049, Fund 01 Correctional Facility, is over 6 million dollars. These four funds combined for a total of nearly 17 billion. And if one looks at the budget in detail, one can find a lot of the money being spent for administration and purchased services. They amount to several million dollars. It's money being spent for contracted services. Is there any accounting of these expenses?
Thank you, you. All right, Donna.
Yes, talk about that seniors are struggling, and you talk about that families are struggling. I'm a retiree who use the library constantly down there, see all the different people that come in and out. You're, have stripped it down to nothing. I'm also an educator. You need, you will not find a librarian that does not have the master's degree because that's a requirement of a librarian. And what you're doing, I think, is one last free service for families and seniors, and I would hope that you stuck whatever you're doing.
Thank you. Kim.
So I have a different perspective on this, and it's never been a funding issue, budgeting issue, or an under-utilization issue. This is happening in small towns all over the country. This is censorship, plain and simple. They're reducing the access to the library based on the belief that the library materials are harmful and offensive. If you don't believe me, allow me to quote Mr. McLeanco on a recent podcast. Look, I'm not anti-library, I'm anti-crap in libraries, I'll tell you that much. I'm not going to fund any nonsense. So anyway, yeah, the library budget got cut down, end quote. And it was just a few short weeks after this, our library director was fired and escorted out by Sheriff Tuckettis. When elected officials cherry pick what receives funding based on their personal beliefs, that's censorship. They may not be going around taking books off the shelves like they do down in Florida, but that they seem like, deem offensive, although they may take, they should probably take the one that discuss authoritarian theory off the shelves. But what they will do is everything in their power to reduce funding, reduce staff, reduce hours. For now, it's up to us in the community to defend our First Amendment rights against suppression of this core information, so the censorship stops here.
Thank you.
Twenty-one seconds.
Walter.
McLeanco said, people are struggling. Miller said, large parts of the county, seniors are seniors are struggling. McLeanco said, if you have kids at home, you may be struggling. Part of that is because the county keeps taking services away. I think a couple of others have said it better than I can, but you keep doing that, you don't raise taxes so you can keep those services, and it seems like you're going to continuously do this, take services away from the public. That's, what government should be is providing services to the public. And if you keep doing this, nobody's going to want to live here. And you're not going to attract the people to pay the taxes that need to be paid, and it's going to be a problem. I understand I really can't speak the way I want to to you guys, you have made that clear at the last meeting. Commissioner Miller, you said that you can't control your board. I believe that is voluntary of you, that you have every right to control your board because it's in your law, your rules. I read the Roberts rules, you have every right to control your board members, but you choose not to. You would rather have them shout over top of people and control the narrative that way, control us, and it's ridiculous. I, I don't know what to say because I know that I can't speak how I wish to. And we are extremely limited on time, so one thing I will say, my last moments, is that you have artificially chosen to reduce the amount of hours that this board can meet by setting another meeting right afterwards. I recommend you fix that for next year instead of setting these artificial hours.
James.
Oh, is this one, if you can comment on the recovery wellness program at the YMCA, what that would do.
You can get with Michelle afterward, she can explain it.
All right, thanks.
Anything else?
I do have some questions.
Okay, Phil, yeah.
Mr. McLeanco, how long have you been in office now?
Just 2004.
And Mr. Miller, you?
2012, I took office.
And pardon my ignorance, but in that time, how many times has taxes been raised in the county?
Since I've been here, none.
You have?
So I did not vote for the $300,000 increase in 2008, I believe, when that was the majority board.
I was gonna say, would you say it's both of your goals to never raise taxes for, in the county budgets?
I will say, you never say never, but it's going to be my goal to try to keep from doing that as long as you possibly can and to try to make it as, as least obtrusive to the people in the county, to be able to have services at reasonable rates so that people can afford to stay in their houses, especially senior citizens.
And you don't?
It's under my control not to raise taxes. If there's, if you have a, if you have money, you know, if you have money in the bank for a simpler term, you shouldn't, but I will tell you this, you know, there's services, there's discussion of services being cut. What I, what I alluded to when I made my statement, I alluded to when I made my statement, was that when you go to the gas pump and you see people prepaying 20 bucks, because that's all they have, when you go to the grocery store and people are counting in their carts, what they can do, when you talk to seniors that are turning their heat, I just had a senior yesterday was very upset because of their electric bill and they can't afford it, that's what I'm talking about. So hopefully, we get this going in a different direction, get inflation under control, and get expenses down. We have to do it, and you know, as a county, I'll do everything in my power to help do that.
Now you have to ask gentlemen, since you've been in office, would you say it's been your goal to privatize county departments?
Not specifically, no.
Or I should say, has it been your goal to privatize most of the county departments and services?
Not that I'm aware of.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Another question, since Jeff Singer retired last year, has it been your intent to close the library because you don't want residents to read certain materials you find objective? Doug?
I don't even, that doesn't even make sense. You know, Mr. Singer passed away. Mr. Singer was a friend of mine, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
He was here when I hired Mr. Singer, you know, so I'm not going to drag him into this.
But is it your intent to close the library because you reject the concept?
This is so ridiculous, is it closed?
But is it your intent?
Is it closed?
Is it your intent?
Is it closed?
Is it your intent?
I think the answer's simple.
Did you call the huddle?
Darrell, here's your answer.
My answer is what we did with the budget is to keep the library open at a, at a budget that we can afford to keep, keep it going.
Gentlemen, that's all I got.
Thank you.
I'd like to point out potential sunshine.
We have two minutes.
Can I ask a question? How many, how many county departments raise money to offset their budget?
To varying degrees, a number of different county, county departments raise money.
So when I donate to the Bradford County Library, such as someone donated 30,000 in your state, in the county, the library is under budget that year, that money is then what, morphed back into the general fund?
And, yeah, you know, much is committed to the general fund through the contributions.
So the library, the library budget is kept separate?
Yes, the library budget, those monies denoted to the library stay there.
About 700 bucks since 2008, I believe, it's come out of the general fund.
About 700 bucks, that's 2008, I believe, was coming together.
How many, how many businesses have been privatized? Mr. McLenco, something from here?
One, the Manor.
That's one. Where would we be able to find a list that have been privatized?
Michelle can break. There's just been one, been the Manor. Okay, everybody rip it out and talk. All right, motion to.
Kim, can I? Go ahead.
Just making sure for my sake, so when you say that the 45,000, that's been a lot of for the mobiles, that is also part of now the library's budget in 2025?
Yes.
Okay, and then just also, there's an additional 40K that now is also based on what was previously listed.
Yes.
All right, just wanted to make sure and that, sorry, came in a few minutes late. And then also, Commissioner Gates, just want to ask, since I haven't asked you yet, what is your take on the library's budget? You haven't really said as much as the other commissioners and sheriffs.
I mean, look, if you look at how much the budget is, I think it's, it's close. If you, I mean, in other words, you know, the thing that has changed is understanding that according to the state librarian, the minimum hours are 45 for a library this size and service area, not 65. That being said, you know, do I think that there could be a greater number of hours, something below 65, but north of 47? Yes, I do, because I look at the data and I see certain blocks of time, if you divide days that it's open into four-hour chunks, there are certain four-hour chunks that historically the numbers of patrons and usage is smaller. So if you're looking to cut, you could conceivably do it without an extraordinarily effect, in my opinion, on individuals. So you could get it under 65, and that's just, you know, again, looking at the economic realities of what we face. But, you know, the budget we adopted or was adopted by majority of the board today, you know, supports a certain level, and that's certainly going to be within the purview in terms of hours and how it shakes out, that's going to be within the purview of our, the person acting in that stead to manage the library. So, you know, I don't take any great joy in where it's at. That being said, you know, I see the signs that say save the Bradford County Library, and I understand that, and I've said it in a past meeting. I don't know what a win looks like, but I know what a loss looks like.
Is this a loss?
And the loss to me would be completely losing our library. That would be the loss. So, you know, we live to fight another day. I, you know, I, but I think the broader issue that I hope to raise today is just regardless of what the department is, going down the line, there are serious conversations, and you're seeing the tip of the iceberg here in terms of what those serious conversations are going to have to be year over year.
And also then with the RFP, now that the budget's been changed to reflect that additional 40K, does that affect whatsoever the RFP that's been put out?
No. Nope.
And any plans with that, you know, plans to potentially make the library a nonprofit? Does that affect?
We're going to wait till, those are discussions that are ongoing, going forward, we're not going to deal with those right now, we're just dealing with budget at this time, and we've, we've put the RFP out, so.
And Michelle, when is the RFP responses due? When are they due?
January 6th.
No, January 6th.
January 6th?
Wonderful. And just asking, I understand if you don't have an answer, would you like to say anything just now for the public as to why the interim director was fired from her position?
It's a personnel matter, and we're not going to get into that in this guy.
Just doing my due diligence.
Well, I'd like to say that we run everything by our HR attorney or lawyer, and we go off their recommendations, so to think that this was something that just happened, it's, we take great, any employee issues, we take very, very, very seriously, we always have. Again, we go off, goes right through our legal counsel, and their recommendations are then discussed. All right, before we adjourn, I just want to say one thing, a couple things, actually. One, congratulations to Detroit Football Team. I think it's the first time in Bradford County history that we've got PIA double A state champion football team in the county. That is a huge, huge achievement on that, that group of young men out there playing football and what a, what a season they had this year. It was, it was amazing. They showed Bradford County tough, that's for sure. I'm just jealous, I'm a Wailooosean boy, but. I watched some, half of it listened on Wiggles and the other half, and that was exciting right down to the last kick, but I think they found out that their offensive line, they bigger lineman, we had smaller lineman, and found out what tough is all about, so we're real proud of them. I managed to watch about the last two minutes of that game, and I'll tell you what, I was impressed. They drove those guys off. And we will be recognizing them formally at a later date.
Correct, correct. I have something to add, I'm not saying anything else.
And then I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
What is the next step, Commissioner?
26th.
Boxing Day.
That's our plan.
All right. I would also like, I think I'm the only one of the three of us who graduated from Troy.
You are. I graduated from Wailooose. I did graduate just for the right.
I know, I, that's, that's what I say. I'm sorry. I see another guy right here, okay? So I just wanted you to say, you know, Sheena Barnes, our HR director, another, Dan Thorpe, our financial director, another Troy.
Are you going to call out every Troy?
I may, I may.
I am.
But, yeah, we've got another one right here. So I just, I just want to say, and I'll make broader remarks in the future, but I think when I was down at the game, I wanted to thank all of Bradford County because I saw more than just Troy people at the game down there in Mechanicsburg. It was truly support, and all of the individuals who lined the roads, all the people who came to games. I also want to thank just the entire community of Troy and the school at Troy, the administration did a wonderful job supporting them. I want to thank the marching band, I want to thank the cheer squad who were there every step of the way, and I'll tell you, cheering band were the biggest cheerleaders and supporters of that crew, but ultimately, the results happen on the field, and, and I will say this, you know, Joe Puccino said that the will to win is important, but the will to prepare is vital, and what you saw was a preparation that went into every single day, dating back not just to August when camp started, but all of the work that went in beforehand, and let that be a lesson for all of us to potentiate ourselves and prepare for success. So, thank you.
Matt Allen, you've been with a lot of those kids from when they're little, all the way up, and you coach in Troy, and would you like to add anything?
We're very proud of the Troy kids, I coached basketball, we're going to help coach basketball, a lot of those kids from the football team are now transitioning into basketball, and it's been a joy to coach them. They are good people, they're good young men. About our coaches, our coaches are great coaches, but they are better humans, okay? The relationship that those men have with the players is unmatched. If you see them working with those kids, you just see those kids who have run through a brick wall for those guys because they're treated right, they're treated with respect, they're pushed, and the results showed on the field.
Didn't I see something where they have dinners together, like, I think it's a line or something, lines or whatever they have?
They get a, get a certain number of rushing yards, I guess.
And they get a dinner together? Yeah. I think they did run through a brick wall for those boys.
They absolutely did.
All right, we got a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All right, adjourn, thank you very much.